Yeah.
Water.
That sure is.
It was. Yeah. I can't help my everything here, guys. But I had with my. Internet cable last. You know, I looked at the video, it was, there was no breaks in it, so.
Really?
So I know.
It might.
I know. Not you love it, but.
Six o'clock, we'll go meeting order. Christina, you got our role.
Yeah.
I will dispense with the pledge unless there's an objection. And we can move to approval of this evening's agenda. And will be approved this evening's agenda. Me certain. For a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I. Posed and none carries. Old business right into the public works.
Um, I can, I'll, I'll start, I'll let Mike and Tim jump in.
Okay.
Um, the first thing I have in your packet is. Um, this proposal from Fuller that we're moving forward with, I just want the council to understand. Um, that when we value engineer the, the building down took all the flooring out. That's why I attached the second document, you miss um PDF, so you could see. That the flooring was a little over fifteen thousand dollars estimated from uh TNT. Um, after we've done our punchless walkthrough in the last couple of weeks, we just. Came to the understanding, we were not going to put anything down on the office sides of the break room sites, we're just gonna go with the straight. Um, just the cement. But you know, after painting and everything else, it just. It's not the finished look we want, so we feel as though it's gonna be better. Use for both sides, the public works on the lease side for us to have polar come in and coat the flooring. It'll be a non-slip resistant coating too, because the majority of the traffic that's gonna come down through both of those places is gonna be pretty wet, dirty. You know, it'll be easier to clean than something like a carpet tile. And that I believe that um when the flooring was first put into the project. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably an LBT. Something on the same lines as like the the PON's off sale would have been in which would cost us more anyway. This will be a lot more durable or lasting, it'll last like buildings. And doesn't have to have any extra hope to provide activities to, no, no. And how is it taken care of? With model.
I think it's my model.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So we've done a lot of work with polar, they've done a lot of stuff on that building. They've done a lot of work for us at the camp around and at the wayside, they've been very clear with us, so. We, we looked at what we spent on those two projects and we expected this to be fairly reasonable. Um, it's still a healthy price tag, but it won't have to be something that we'll have to replace. That'll go from all the offices all the way back to the break rooms.
Basically the same stuff that's in the wayside. Yeah, same as what's in the wayside, other pantry part, uh what the mall court bathrooms got done last season, you know.
Yeah. And the nice thing is, is that um. Fuller's got the time, so it's not gonna throw us behind at all, they're gonna be able to start this week, I think, right, right?
What's that?
Fuller can start this week.
Uh, next.
Next week, so the word, we're gonna, it's not gonna slow us down on our moves or anything. So I wanted you guys just to see this, so you were aware of it.
And this is just part of the facility, the break rooms or the office areas, is that right?
Yeah, it's on the both wings.
Yeah.
Everything other than the shop.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense, because if you have bare concrete, that's gonna get thirty, yeah, in two months, it'll be.
That's nice.
Like ten years old.
Yeah.
It's impossible to lock.
And it was always our intention to get area rugs from like air mark or whatever at the entrances, so that, you know, like come between. The outside office and the inside office door of the police side, or at least in the, the entryway of the. Public work side, if there's somebody from the public coming in that can have something that can like a feet off one too. Oh, that'll, we're gonna still do that at the doors, just so that we don't have. Additional water coming in for any, any other reason.
Interesting.
You know. Um, I'll let. You wanna touch about the last week's, is it the locker room, you guys?
There's not really much to touch on right now.
It's like it went pretty well.
It went pretty well, there's a few small things that need to be addressed, so like.
We're talking about punch walk, punchless walk.
We knew that was coming, it's obviously not, you know, fully completed right now, so there's a few things here and there, but. All in all, it's just about there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the sort of substantial completion will be coming based on what I.
Yeah, that should be, that should be going through for sure.
Yeah, and so I think the biggest thing is the countertops, we're still waiting on.
Waiting on the countertops from Northwood's lumber, those um great plumbing camp. Have their stuff inspected or signed off until the countertop is in, because then they can put the sink in and finish that up. Yeah, what else?
We're waiting on the hardware and the doors.
Hardware on the doors, the AC units will actually go in, they're here, but they won't get installed until it warms up.
There's, there's nowhere for them to go, there's ice mountain back there.
Right.
Well, we really wanna review the outside, I hear you work also, and you know, we'll pour final end in the punch those all. That'll have to wait till we get some of the decent other than the more lights up.
Yeah. But other than like the flooring and the door handles, nothing's really keeping us from moving in the shop area right now at all. And there's some office things that I need to take it um and work on, so that the office sides will get moved into, but obviously the, the biggest. The biggest substantial portion of moving in is gonna be the shop.
Yeah, Mike, the friend was saying, um, after we get the door locks, he's waiting. You talked about moving in, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And supposedly Wednesday?
Supposedly Wednesday.
We'll see.
Yeah, we'll see. We have not enough hardware show up basically.
But we're getting close.
Yeah.
Sure looks nice from the outside, and we were just at the water plant name.
Punch list will be available.
Yeah.
And then at some point, we're.
Yeah.
We don't want for dynamic yet.
No, already, no. Oh, when the completion dates are, yeah, it, it really kind of depends on that countertop, I suppose, my mind.
Yeah, the countertop is holding that up and.
You're looking for a final completion date, Max.
No, I mean, there's the, the basic punch list of what's been or what's still.
What's still needs to be done, you want.
Punch list, friend will either get that out tonight or tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I have nothing else on it.
So the total for the four is ten thousand six eighty, is that correct? Okay, yeah. And how many square feet are we getting out of that?
Uh, that's roughly about two thousand square feet.
Okay. That's not a good question, I can answer, I'm just still looking right at you. We need a motion to approve this, is that correct? I know, we're moving forward, we don't have any more, anyway, because we're responsible for the flooring, I just felt it necessary, you should have, you guys are. Yeah. Then we can move on.
Yeah. Tomorrow. E R for them.
So I'm gonna. Give this right to Tim.
Uh, that's everything planned.
Because there's people here that don't even know what this is, so. You know, like you go through that.
Yep.
In order to get funding, we have to go through this effort, and it's quite an effort, you know, it's something that takes. In a lot of communities, we've worked on them for two and three years, so you know, this one's. Not in the name of the time that it's given, because it's very comprehensive, including your wastewater facilities, including your water treatment tanks, including some utilities and streets. You know, what I think, yeah, uh, like an evaluation of the tower, all your renovations.
Interims.
Yeah.
Pretty much all our assets.
Yeah, yeah, pretty sure that's actually. Yeah, so you know, because the city has a medium household income that's inappropriate level, we can apply for these, and it'll be. Hopefully awarded in grants and loans, you know, it makes it affordable for the city, depending on. Which uh route you go, it'll be inward from the twenty year loan to a forty year loan, depending on the funding agency. Um, so you just try to put your wish list together, but it's gotta be backed up by data. And you know, so some of this is, is I believe we were working with Mike, trying to get some additional televised, you know, sewer lines. And I think that happened in twenty one. Um, so we need that information for all the reports that we can back them up, and we need for what infrastructure and things like that. Uh, we were just out at the water treatment plant today, looking at that to make sure we have a full understanding of. What we need to do out there, so we can extend the life of that thing another four years. Um, I think we've gotten the questions answered on the wastewater. And a big thing is you don't wanna miss anything, so you don't include it in the P R originally. You can't try to put it in later if something.
For funding.
Yeah.
For funding. Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, and try to make it comprehensive now. Um, and so what'll happen is once the report is done, and again, we're hoping either this month or the very first. Part of April, that report will be done. Um, we just need to make sure that uh after our settles, maybe get all the information in for engineering report, so we're getting. Getting very close to having that wrapped up, and then that'll be submitted to the agencies for. Uh, we even found. And as part of that, we bring the environmental report along as part of that. Because you have to do that as well, and so I think that one we had slated to have done in. That people. Yeah, because then we've got. A month after, you have to give uh all the agency the month. Time to respond. And offer any comments like for ship, like historic properties and endangered species and major plants, stuff like that, they have to respond, saying whether or not they're in their area and where you have to. Take preventative measures, I guess. So those are in the works, hopefully they'll be again. Done soon, to get those part. Uh, we did have a contract on that, I think that was for forty five thousand, and we only built. Twenty five of that.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah. And so, you know, we have a lot more effort into it than that. Uh, but that will be part of the report, so that that will get just all encompassed within the loan or the grant or whatever, she was all become. Part of the project, and so there'll be some going back and forth, once we submit this, it's not done, there's a lot of going back and forth. There'll be various agencies, so there'll be some, there'll be things that we have to work on, they'll ask for verification. Items like that, so. Or we're being, we're being really close. Questions of.
No, I'm just, I'm happy to see it, actually, you know, very thorough.
Yeah, it is a thorough document, yes, so.
And this is then, this becomes the city's document, correct, or is this?
It works hand in hand with our capital replacement. Your capital improvement plan.
I mean, it's not like it's a. You know, this thing isn't gonna like expire, you know, next year or.
No, no, like for the city of Iowa, that's an example where that one has taken over ten years to do it. Uh, that's sorry, with other. Companies and we, when we were in with the city of Iowa, uh, it took us another couple years to wrap up, and the city waited for that for ten years, so. You guys are well ahead of that, I don't think of this. But. Yeah, so once these things are approved. Then what'll happen is when she secure the funding, then we'll be able to walk through it, and then we'll be able to start working through the construction process. And that's assuming you're successful.
And then, yeah.
But before you can even apply for any funding, this has to be in place.
Right.
Correct.
One of the, one of the original reasons, um. We, we lean towards getting this completed was. Um, back in nineteen, the local option sales tax statutes changed. We couldn't use local option sales tax for those infrastructures any longer, had the usual simple projects. And this was suggested so that we had some backup and some asset listings of what we needed, so that funding could be got. Could be applied for, because. One of the biggest roadblocks we have is, you know, we don't have, there's no money out there for streets.
No, there, there really isn't, it's one of the most costly.
And abused.
Yeah, it's. Absolutely necessary, and there's nothing over there.
And we, we adopted a capital improvement plan back in two thousand eighteen, it was updated in two thousand twenty, but the problem was is that we can't really even work towards that without funding. So we should be working on our first five year plan right now of that capital improvement fund, we haven't been able to touch it, because we haven't been able to apply for funding. And the whole mechanism for doing that was to get the local sales tax option, however reason for it, right, now we can't do that, so we went to this avenue.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe. Other councils before us have started this process and stopped it. Correct?
You know, when Kurt Meyer first brought this idea to us back in twenty, um, yes, he did state that. Previous boards. Um, considered going down this process with this P R E R program. And the, the price tag on leading it was too high, they. Did not want to put the money into it, but in twenty. The board that was sitting at that time and ready to move forward with it.
Exclusional here, right?
Exactly, he'd be growing forty five thousand dollars at night.
Right. But you can't get something if you don't have something in the bag. Tough decision.
Right. And this is something that's done.
Again.
Yeah, it's been. Being funded by our water, most water. Department since we started the process, so that'll continue.
And that'll be another thing, as part of this process will happen is. Uh, the fees that you're charging will get evaluated, because we not only have to pay for the infrastructure, we also pay for future maintenance and. Future improvements and things like that, so as part of this, there'll be a look at how you're charging the residents and see if that is.
Yeah, I know some cities that have never done. Utility rate studies. And they tried getting funding, and that was an absolute must, and they had. You know, they didn't ever even have base fees, so that. Had to be adopted in order for them to get funding.
Yeah, you know, because you want this to be a long term, you don't wanna run it red, so.
They also have to see like that the city was depreciating anyway, for capital improvement, long one. It seems like a long haul for such a short step, but. Especially when you don't see any change. Physical change.
Yes, and while we're out in public trying to. Tell people what we're doing there.
Right, right.
To help your street.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, because that's, that's a case of Iowa, you know, the unfortunate thing is you as residents and city staff. You're the ones that hear about it first, right, because you're the ones that are out there, and so people just ask me. Would you stop that, you told me that two years ago, what's going on?
Yeah, right.
So, you know, and that, that's a tough thing, but they don't understand. These things do take. Uh, quite a while to be, uh, developed and. But we are very close enough.
Does he have anything?
No.
What, at sixteen?
Doesn't make its color, wasn't that problem?
Well, are, are printed copies of one? I mean, that was coming.
Are you gonna have mine? I have an additional one.
Yeah, and that's a draft, and it's changed pretty bit since then.
It has, yeah, yeah.
So.
No.
It's, it's twelve, it takes, like.
Is that the same one you had a couple years ago?
Yeah, I think that one's from two thousand twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It's the, it's the last, it's the last one, Lynn, Lynn Eaton is no longer with Woods End, right, he retired, he also was on the city council down in Glidie Two, so it's. That, that was like one of the last things that Lynn was doing before he left Woods End, I wanna say.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
So, yeah, but that had new changes there.
Yeah, well, yeah, the price of the championship is tied mine, yeah, so there's a lot that's been added, that should.
Yeah, a lot more comprehensive, yeah.
But as soon as I get the next draft. Yeah, this is it.
You'll have lots.
I've got it back on the old, old business, though. Definitely there, you guys.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'll make a note, it's just. I'm gonna blow it up for them to see it, it just moved over. And I'm only reading, and I guess, oh, that, anyway. So anybody else besides Laurie, what?
And Caleb's home number is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well. The unfortunate reality is when you call our office, it goes right to this one anyway. So you can get us a little. So I don't know if you guys, obviously, probably never dealt with rural development, these kind of programs, um, because it's mostly new comps, I know the platform has in the past. Um, but you know, geared towards small communities, you know, there's like a potration. Limit on, so that's geared towards keeping small communities alive, and that's why you can chase these sort of things, but funding is quite substantial, it's not like it's. You know, all gonna be a little low interest loan, with a lot of free money, so. For small cities. Well, there's a lot of different things that go in that, you know, in the case of Iowa, I think. They were very fortunate, because they ran a list of that online, they ended up getting uh core engineers to three million dollars, I thought. Six million dollar property, possibly, yeah.
Nice.
Uh, that was just out of nowhere, and my. That's a pretty rare thing that happens, and so nobody really knows why that happened, but I think it's just because. I don't have been trying to get money for so long, I think. So it'll be based on your medium household, and some of the things that. Be the affordability of the city, and how much we plan to purchase. If you cry long enough and loud enough.
Well, you know, the federal government. Put all that money out there for small cities and infrastructure, and so, I mean, so there should be some money out there, maybe. For small cities.
That gets ran through these programs like USDA and PFA and stuff like that, so it's ready, you know, ready. Yeah, well, yeah, what's nice is you will have all those entities looking at this together, so it won't be just probably one funding source, it's probably multiple funding sources.
You guys gotta get the teller, huh? Or we?
Well, we have tell seven, so.
Okay.
Yep. Well, we asked Shelley if she'd put us back on the agenda, she said, yeah, she would do that.
Awesome, very good. That's good.
Uh, is there anything else we wanna cover while they're still here?
No.
You said nothing, you want those sales texts?
Not telling him, here from Los Angeles.
Well, each day, have it in the house file, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's the only one I know of, I'm not trying to jump through the agenda, but yeah.
No, okay.
I haven't heard from the, our senator yet, but. I also haven't heard from Senator Russ, who's the tax committee chair, that neither. That the sen, that the. Our representative from the senate hasn't submitted a senate file, so. To my knowledge, there's stuff out there, I had to have it in by the first of March, so I asked every day from the time. I was notified on February twenty fourth to make sure that the tax committee had both the house and the senate file. Um, I think Representative Bliss had called me, and we spoke about that, and he said that he will talk with Steve Green. And make sure that that side got that covered, I just haven't seen my hard copy yet.
When was the date, I think twelve twenty nine, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
What can we, if your business can buy the first camera on?
And pass the ball, no, yeah. Yeah.
We'll move on.
You know, the next four, um, items C through F. On the agenda, Max, the only thing. I really can give you an update on is C. Um. And that's on my struggle bus of getting the federal tax lanes off of the main street property.
Yeah.
Um, I did get an email from our city attorney on Monday of last week that they um were able to get somebody. Down in St. Paul to look at those federal lanes, and he needed the originals, so I got those to him last Tuesday. And they are working on getting those removed right now, so I'll try to get an update before the next meeting.
Well, that's.
So that's.
You've had. For.
Two months.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it took a long time for him to find somebody, so I'm crossing my fingers that. Um, this will be the last. Chasing down of that. Everything else is still, um, just kind of on hold.
Yeah. You have anything to add to the, um. Anything else for the local option sales tax thing that we?
No, I don't.
Get right to there.
Yeah.
Either RFP or services?
Um, the due date on that is April. First or fifth, that, thank you, and um. That's just pending until the due date. I imagine some of those RFPs will start coming in, not with. Every entity I think that has an interest, it's just Tim and I haven't had a chance to sit down because of. Weather.
This week.
Thursday.
We're talking.
We're supposed to get it tomorrow, it'll be gone by Thursday, we'll be fine.
Well, we're talking.
Mike's ears are burning right now, he just doesn't even wanna listen to you.
We're talking Thursday, too.
We may be doing a Zoom call.
Well, then we'll move on to I, if anyone else has any questions on the.
Okay, um, I spoke with Rob Jensen, um, and discussed with him about reviewing the other duck, uh, for. Counselor Johnson's request, he has sent in a revised site visit and assessment plan, you can see the price went up a little bit for some more time. From the original, which was like nineteen hundred dollars, so not a ton of additional um service time. Um, we have set a tentative date of June the fifth, which is a Monday for him to be up here. He figures it'll probably be up here for two days. Um, he has requested. Uh, the city tried to provide him access to the top of both ducks, so that he can actually. See what's up there, and Mike and I came up with a couple of ideas, um, using our drone. A towel ladder, uh, rather suggested scaffolding, something that'll get him up there, so he doesn't have to rent a lift. You know, um, the. The drone idea was a great idea, but he really wants to be able, he can get a better idea, if he can actually. Physically touch and see what's going on at the sculptures, so um he's trying to come up with some better. Uh, cost saving ways for him to be able to see all the way up to the top of the wings of the other duck. But he is, he's already committed, and this is the increase in cost from the original proposal.
Does he need drone class?
No, we own our own.
You have your own?
Yeah. Yeah, they're in a bucket.
Sounds like he's going for riding tractor, but.
So he, he's pretty much open to just about anything, you know, and he's, he's been all over different types of statues, so my guess is he's, he's seen it all, so we'll. Do the best we can with what we have.
Did you use the fire truck?
Probably cheaper to use than my, my truck, it was a fire truck. I think the biggest obstacle is probably gonna be. Yeah, duck at the wayside, because we got the blood holes right behind it, and. The light in the front of it, and we don't wanna put too much around it, so we destroy. The surroundings, so.
Don't worry, we'll get it almost.
We'll, we'll figure it out. We'll figure out, that's, that's really what he's asked for, and that's, that's, that's. That, I told him I got time to bang it out, so I'll figure something out by then. If, if I may just add one more point, as I did. If I may just add one more point, as I did have a conversation with the chamber um members last week about this. Kind of told them what our plan was, and that after the site visit, we have an idea of costs for um. You know, revitalizing or repairing, um, and that this might become a community fundraiser. Seeing if the chamber had interest in, you know, sharing on some of the costs and that that I thought that was received well from. Some of the members that were at that meeting, I can't speak to the whole, but. I think it continued talking to it to other organizations and they realized the importance of it. Even the planning commission's really. I'm excited that this is gonna be done, on the regional significance, historical landmark type. Conversation we had about both ducks, I did a little looking around on the Minnesota. Minnesota has. Designated. Statues and designated historical. Places and, you know, statues, but it's not on the history, the the. Historical history. Level, um, it has to be on a broader scale than Black Duck in order for it to really qualify. But um one of our planning commission members thinks that there's also a regional. Um, funding level that could be. Applied for for these renovations too, and he's got a couple ideas, he's worked similar towns that have done, and so. We'll we'll find out what Rob does, can find out how what needs to get done on the ducks, and then we'll go from there. Yes, no, not yet, not yet. Um, I've submitted a roundup grant through the attorney electric for just this portion of it. Cause we have no idea what the substantial cost will be for the renovations at this point. I figured region two arts council, things like that would be the drivers of the funds.
Yeah, one of the history center.
And the history center, yeah, they they can probably apply.
They're really helpful to push. Move on to greater replacement.
So I made two phone calls. Um, one to Gail Iverson from WSET, cause she's a uh financial advisor from WSET, and then also to Angela Baca Boy of USDA. In regard regards to Mike's request about purchasing the county's greater. The document I gave you is Gail's submission of what we could qualify for in that funding. Um, since she sent me that, I've actually had a one-on-one with Angela. We um that that greater would qualify for a community facility. Uh, grant loan combination through USDA, doesn't matter if that's a two thousand one. Um, she can't say if it would be um. A potential grant. Portion, it really depends on how many applications are written up, and then they're ranked, so if there's. Six applications and five of them are for an ambulance, and one of them's for this greater, chances are, ours is gonna be on the bottom. But there's definitely loan dollars that we can get from USDA, which obviously Gail had listed here already.
It's similar to how we got.
That's exactly the mechanism we went for the skid steer, and the only thing different is right now. When we did the skid steer, we did get thirty thousand dollars or in grant dollars, the rest of it was. Um, a loan, so if we had to go worst case scenario through USDA as an all loan, um.
When you say worst case scenario?
That we didn't get a grant.
Okay.
Worst case scenario, we don't get any grants, and we have to do full loan. Okay, you take into account how much the applicant contribution would be, which at this point, we're just saying what the. We, if we sold the existing greater we have, knocking off the total would be sixty-five thousand. A ten-year loan through USDA at three point seven five percent would be about sixty-six. Hundred dollars a year for ten years, but Angela's um bosses would prefer like a seven year. Because it's equipment and it's age, which would be somewhere around a nine thousand dollar a year loan. But, and we could tie the legal fees and closing costs into that, which would end up being about three thousand, but we would have to bond for it. So I'm kind of at the point right now, um, Mike and I, I've had some conversations about the value of the current greater. You can share that input with you on that. Um, what I gave you for numbers is based off of if we got like ten grand for the existing greater, but.
I think we're gonna be really pushing it.
If we get ten.
To pull ten grand, and actually, I had a conversation today with uh someone. Who is well-versed in that world and actually made me an offer on it today, and that offer was sixty-five hundred dollars. That's probably gonna be about where we're gonna sit on that, there was one. I believe it was Kellier, just got rid of theirs not long ago on auction, that was bid on by. Two people in the area and one out of Canada, the way I understood it, and that one went for around that. Dollar amount, however, it had newer tires on it. Our real drawback with ours is part of our problem right now, a- and why this ball is rolling to a extent. The tires are all shot, that machine's gonna take eleven thousand dollars with tires to put on it. Not to mention the valve bank issues that we've been having over the last few years. So that's, I I'm gonna make another call and. Have somebody else take a look and shoot a price, you know, if they're interested in it or not, but I'm guessing that that price is gonna be. Almost identical to the one that I was given today.
So what I need from you guys is probably a head nod or go ahead to continually through forward with Angela on the state form documents. I mean, that at least keeps us rolling on it, cause she knows we've got a deadline of September, October.
Roughly, and I would like kind of a go-ahead too, so that I can reach out to the county and let them know that, hey, we we are trying to go forward with this.
Right.
So that machine.
Cause there's definitely loan dollars there. We can, just can't be guaranteed grant dollars on it, and I won't know until I get at least a stage one in there, and we put the application in, which. I think is like an April one due date.
What was the possible grant amount, what would the grant?
Well, it would. Yeah, they don't even know what their grant dollar. Bucket is at right now.
Cause I I was thinking, I was trying to think back to the skids here, and you had said thirty, but I thought we got.
I I think we we in, we uh loaned thirty and the fifty or.
I believe they they granted us fifty some thousand.
I think it was the other way around too, I think the thirty was loaned or the other half of the seventy-five was.
So just in perspective, if you know the grant came through for us, and it got close to that. Then you're not talking nearly the amount of.
Then you're not talking the same loan dollars. But because USDA doesn't know what their bucket of money for grant is right now, we're. I'm kind of on a on a gray scale of do I go ahead and keep going and and put forth the state, the rest of the stage one documents to her, so she can at least get it in. Find out how many apps they get, find out what dollars they get to figure out where we rank, and then we'll go from there until the. Um, the letter can come out.
Kind of, you know, absolute best case scenario, we're borrowing twenty to thirty thousand dollars, and worst case scenario, we're borrowing. The entire.
The entire lot.
The entire amount.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna mirror the same conversation with the skid steer purchase.
Right.
We we loaned thirty and we have a thirty-four hundred dollar payment for ten years.
I don't.
For ten years with USDA, but that is a brand new machine.
Right.
There are more apps who want us to do a seven because the age of this counting machine, but. Mike did explain to Angela that the entire ending's been read on, there's new tires, it's got a full maintenance record, so that went, that went. A pretty distance with her.
Cause we're way out of the ballpark and even thinking about a brand new machine.
Yeah.
We're talking about this machine.
Yeah.
Do you, do you know if it matters? This is just a question thrown out there, that you know, could matters if it if for used equipment? Or like your skid steer was new? Do you the area, you know, the greater is older? But do you know what matters if 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 used equipment, you have to give the grant dollars or different, they set aside.
It it really doesn't sound.
It doesn't sound like it, I mean, my biggest concern was that we were buying something used, and that's what I wanted to confirm with Angela, that we could even finance something used, and. She looked into it, and she said that that was fine. Whether or not that gives us more grant dollars will also play into that too, but. The way I understand it is typically the grant dollars are provided ranked by need. Of what is important, an ambulance weighs a whole lot more than a greater.
Of course.
Okay, so they're gonna give more more of their bucket of money out of those, let's say, six applications to those other ones that are of a higher need. And it, and it might, it's still up to USDA at that point, yeah.
What was the last bill out of frontier? Uh, you know, I can't tell you exactly for sure, but this afternoon I was with these guys, and I went back to the shop, and I see that. Uh, I've got fluid all over the block and all over the parking lot, so there's gonna be another bill frontier real shortly here. I went inside and I see it looks like a couple hoses inside to cut loose and let go. It's pretty standard on that thing to be. Get worked on. We left it, we left it along, and one of the criteria here is had a had an assessment, so feeling a boils and. Ludes all the time is gonna be. Now you can follow us. What was that word?
I would. Christine, they asked if she didn't move forward, I'm guessing, I guess, my opinion is yeah.
Yes, that's something that's needed.
Can you stop in my office and touch my afternoon inside some of the state one documents that I only have like two I have to finish? Or that I've been through this, this will be my third round with them now, so I, some of it's not as difficult as others, so. I I, the sooner I can get stuff to Angie, the better, quicker it'll. You may need to get some more information from the county for that stage one.
Well, that's, yeah, what I kinda need to know, if I'm going further, if I went.
Not, not to overstep with the council, but wouldn't you say that? Mike can tell the county we're seriously looking for USDA dollars to purchase this.
We are seriously looking for the funding source.
Gets the county some pause and won't.
Well, that kind of secures our our place with it, you know, they they understand that now. We're trying to get it done, so it won't kind of sneak out from underneath of us. I'll get down there and talk to them face to face and go over the machine and all that.
Max, I'll just let you know when I'm ready for your signature, so.
And we're talking road graders. They own the property and four rented property, just even pay.
Um, I have, hey, I've sent a letter out to three of our realtors, I've gotten one. Request back, um, the other two I've heard from, but I haven't seen a letter yet, so that's just for the first street or the railroad pro- um property. I gave them a due date of April first to get me a letter of interest, so I'll move forward with. Thinking a real estate agent once. That due day is gone, so I might have something by the council packet for you guys, just to know, we can move forward if I'm not. Um, but the tax part of the property, I have heard from. The county, um, the approval documents that we sent, we approved first part of March. Are gonna get into their packet. Tomorrow, I think, either this, this week Tuesday or next week Tuesday. So I'll have more information on uh picking up that piece of tax part of the property, probably by the consulting meeting.
I like, I'm thinking that price of that was gonna be about three hundred dollars.
And that was, that was a rough estimate from the county owner in the SASS level, yes, yeah, on a fair market value, or something that big.
Fairly cheap to purchase something.
Forever and taking out the tax rolls.
Odd configuration. It's like there's two alleys, yeah, yeah, almost, yeah. It's not on that map up there. Like this. Anything else, old business? Does the pond have anything that would like to contribute to see these discussion?
Uh, Sean and I went over and visited with Mike at the LEC and got some of our stuff situated. So.
So we're gonna clear it out.
I'm really happy to tell you, the pond does not need a storage.
We do not need a storage shed for our.
Well.
For what we, for what we're keeping, we don't need a storage shed.
Isn't it liberating?
Almost dancing on that one, we got over there and finished up, I mean, there's still a few things that we need to go through with Mike and look at, but. For the most part.
I'm just gonna take this as a win.
A folder soul kind of comes to mind, but.
No, so basically the the components that we need are. The extensions on our new shelving for our new addition, and some of the ceiling tiles and. Replacement stuff that we need is the rest of it is pretty much. And pretty much do what we want to do with it. So the flat top and that auto fryer.
I know Laurie and I were both there, you were there as well, do you wanna recap to bingo?
It wasn't quite as busy, um, looking at numbers from last year's second day versus this year's. They're actually a little lower. Um, but all in all, it was still a good day, profit-wise, everything seemed to go good, so I haven't heard any complaints. Yes.
I did not. People sitting next to me won three times.
Yep.
Yeah, one, yeah, one, two.
Twice.
Two and a half, yeah, I had to split one.
Gail's behind you one twice.
Yeah, so apparently. You don't wanna win bingo, come sit with me.
Orly flowers in the wrong place.
Great cards, I'd be happy. Hey, new business.
All right. Uh, donation from donation request came in the mail for Black Duck After Prom. Um, I provided you guys the letter, I also reached out to Sarah Anderson. Who is on on the committee this year for um the official public. Funds request, um, so hopefully I'll have representation at that April meeting. I haven't heard that from Sarah yet, so we've got a couple weeks, um, I also provided you guys the history of. No, sorry.
No history.
That's what I was looking for.
Hat the down and all, I'll put it on the, I'll put it on the council packet then. As we give, it looks like we gave them fifteen hundred dollars last year. Yeah, and we also talked about though, um, kind of rating in some of those.
Yeah, we also talked about though, um, kind of rating in some of those donations. And we set a cap, I remember, and then. I don't know how many off the top of my head that we donate to, but I thought we should take that in consideration before we get to our number. If if that it was, if you could follow that. Sometimes it gets like a mouth.
Long story short.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a nine year old that I'm dealing.
I'm pretty sure the budget amounts in the liquor stores P N L is four thousand. Um, typically we donate to this organization. Um, uh, Black Deck area chambers and uh, liability insurance for the that covers like the bash and the wood carvers. We cover the history centers, liability insurance.
Toys for tots.
We've given toys for tots, we've given toys for glow in the or we haven't given money, so I'm sorry.
We're paying bills for that, right?
Paying bills for that. Uh, the trap club, if they go to nationals, sometimes they show up. Um, summer baseball hasn't been a request for a couple of years. They've been able to maintain their own financial side it appears. But again, it all depends on what else comes down the pipe, but those are pretty much. Like this one is kind of our standard. Um, I think last year we also went over budget because we donated. Thirty three hundred dollars to the garden club so that they could put new planters in one of these years. So that pushed us over in twenty two. That was not a normal donation or a historical donation, so. So, yeah, um, I can definitely provide this to the board at the council meeting.
Do you have a number of mine, Lori?
No, I was sort of kind of thinking that, you know, look at what we budgeted for and look at what we have done in the last year and decide from that. So we can see where we had put a little overage and.
You guys want me to provide you last year's donation detail? On April tenth two, so you can at least see what we.
I think that.
Cause I know when we donated for like chamber and history center, their insurance liability, their liability insurance is pretty much the same. Uh, give or take twenty bucks, so that doesn't change trap club. Has been kind of consistent. I can give you what we did in twenty two and twenty one if you want. Twenty one might be a little skewed though, because like after prom, we didn't donate in twenty. So they didn't have.
Over.
And then twenty one, I think we give a thousand, what did I have there, a thousand dollars? Or it's like. Twenty one was a thousand fifteen and last year was fifteen hundred, yeah. So for whatever for whatever it was, it just, you know. Yeah, I can give you guys a summary of twenty two. Well, that's right. Um. If I can, the max, the your new business B is also another donation request. And a proclamation request for Max and this this will assist going to the national spelling bee. I I think this is amazing. He's in the paper. This is a great, a great thing for for Blockter. The the request specifically does state though that the organizer issue does carry cover airfare and hotel for. The student and one parent, um, but this fund is additional for his stepdad and brother to go. Super great. I have reservations if this qualifies for the policy, though. A family. But if that is.
If it was.
Up to the decision of the board and your idea of what the policy represents, but I I think this is pushing it.
If it was funding his trip to go, like there was no money for them to go, the school wasn't funding it or the spelling bee itself wasn't funding it. I would feel differently about it, but what I feel is he probably shouldn't. Donate any funds to that.
Cause this is just for his.
His dad and his brother.
They're already, I mean, his trip is probably, he's going and his. What you do past that, you know. I mean. That's my thoughts on it. Is there a copy of our policy and what criteria it is?
Um. I don't think I have it handy, but I can email it to you.
Yeah, we get it before.
Absolutely.
Let's review that. I I do think we should have a little confirmation. Yeah, this is amazing. The most, I have no problem doing that. The most important part of the director's letter is only twice in the history of Black Duck has any student ever made it to the state spelling. Now, our school was formed in nineteen oh three. I believe that means from in the last hundred and twenty years, only two people made it to state. He's one. He's the first that's made it to the national from Black Duck.
And I did ask on this Parker when the when the events, when he has to go and it's not, so like no more your weekend, it sounds like, so I've got some challenge to put the confirmation together.
On the local news function of uh, Lakeland News, very nice video on.
I missed that. I'll have to look.
See it, I'm sure it's in the line.
For YouTube. Yeah, I'll send the donation policies so that those all can see it, cause obviously. Been going off of what I've been telling you guys, but yeah, I I I have no problem. I'll send it to you so you can see. What kind of process we've been following, um, and what's allowable and and really. It is tax dollars, but it's not tax dollars, cause it's liquor rents. I mean, you can you can put the arguments that it's technically liquor revenue. But then it's still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still public.
Right, there's there's a lot of entities that do pull tabs and they take their rent and, you know, they get it back to their staff. Or they use it for improvements for maintenance and stuff like that, and the city is option to put it into a special fund for the community. So we should gauge that.
Yeah, so the proclamation would give them a little local publicity, put them up on the sign and the thing.
Send them off like we do all the teams with ambulance and fire department, police department.
If they if they wanna go that far, we'll go that far, I guess. They don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so this last thing I just wanted to discuss with the council on is kind of a. Further project of me gathering um, insight on this building. Um, you remember in the fall I brought to you guys a boat for having a roof redone and talked about the parapet and. That particular roofing company's expertise and their examination of our roof and how much that would cost. It's. It's kicked me further into considering, okay, the longevity of this building, the D M V is in here now and what else. Foot or could not need to be improved upon. And one of the, one of the things that's always been wearing on me is. Um, this building is, you know, one of the original buildings in town, it's it's heated with, um, you know, baseboard electric. Heat, right?
Hot water, isn't it?
Hot water, yeah. Um, we spend roughly sixty six hundred dollars a year in electricity for this building. The majority of it is in the winter for heating, um, depending upon. The season, you know, our January, February months can run somewhere around seven, eight hundred dollar electric bills. Um.
Is the boiler or the heater on off peak?
That's where I was gonna get to. So. There was an off peak furnace downstairs at one point in time prior to my. Uh, working here, it was disconnected. There was also a fuel oil tank downstairs too, it was run off fuel tank in that um, on. Fuel oil and that's been removed as well. Um. So since Bill Crunden has done such a great job on the rest of electrical in the building and we've had a couple of, um. Shorts on these electrical runs on the original portion of the exterior building. Can't run the microwave and the Keurig at the same time, even though it's on search protector. We have a panel downstairs, that's the old circle fuses. Um, and part of the panel and the panels on the northeast corner of the prop of the building. So it's in front of a downstairs vault, so it is right at smack up again, standard some fabrics outlet. Um, I had Crunden come in, I'm like, can I take this old fuse panel out? What can I do? To improve the building, even though I know all these runs go right through all the cement brick, right? Um, so that was his first question. My next question was, what else can I do for a heat source? Cause I have no room to put propane tank. Have no property. And can't put it on the roof.
Possibly ten feet away from the structure.
And if you look back and you look at the roof, like all of our, all of our, our, our communication wires. Our electric wires all are on those old poles that go straight back to the alley, everything. So. Bill Crunden asked from a partner from Beltrami Electric to come in and look at our panel, our heat source. And help him come up with a uh, suitable plan of action to improve the heat source for this building. And also to do the improvements on.
Who was the electrician?
Bill Crunden.
From Beltrami.
Oh, um. I don't know the guy's name. I think his name is Tom. Sam. I met him and I don't remember. Either way, he came in with Bill, they looked at the panel. Um, they did say that they could remove the old fuse, but what they're uh, suggesting is they take. All of the electrical panels that are on that one section that goes up against Anderson's and move it to the north utility room downstairs, which is. On the north wall and then run two new meter on the outside of the building on this side of the building instead of where it is right now. That way they can run all the way back to the alley underground instead of having it up off the roof. Do you follow me so far?
Yeah.
And then take the old off peak heater and put a stuff us heater in that's would run an off up. And would go back to off peak, which would save us about fourteen hundred dollars a year in electricity for the building. And the rebates from military electric right now are like twenty six hundred dollars on heater. You'd still have to put in the heater. I don't think that's gonna change. But this is a bit that Bill put together a quote to do the relocation, the two new meters and they'll try me electric. Um, heater, it would still need to have um, it plumbed in. What I, the reason for me doing this is I'm trying to come to a full. Project cost, if you will, between. You know, the exterior of the building that needs some help, it's new signage. The electricity, the heat source and the roof, so that I can really bring to the console. What I view as a true idea of what's going to keep this building in place. So this was kind of my second step was the electrical portion, though that we kind of have an idea of what the roof might cost to be updated. I don't know when this is gonna happen. I still have to look at the funding, but I need to give you guys this idea of where I'm going with it and why I'm doing it. See what kind of feedback you have.
So how are we gonna get the electrical service underground without going on somebody else's property? Or somebody else.
So we have two, we got two new two hundred amp services connecting this thing. So you're gonna get more.
Yeah.
Newer ones.
Yes.
And relocate.
Yes.
Okay, then it says they'll turn me on to new boiler to feed, not looking at it in quotes.
Yeah.
You need a new boiler.
So that is, that is this. That is the be there, the step is here, something.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The computer thing again.
Yeah, all right. Yeah. Okay. And if you read um, this email portion from dungeon. In there, you'll see that it states the price for the fifty one thirty step this unit is eighty seven fifty two. Plus tax rebates for that unit total twenty one sixty, so a total of sixty five ninety two plus tax. Um, that does not include the installation, so we need a plumber and a electrician to hook that portion up. So that's just the cost of the heater. So this entire quote, excuse me, is running somewhere. If you add that, it's gonna be somewhere over twenty.
Twenty, okay.
Yeah.
Kind of ours, trying to figure, okay, so there's stuff missing, how much more?
Yeah, so I, I mean, right now I'm ballparking somewhere between twenty and probably twenty three, twenty four.
So mine was.
Yeah, and then, you know, depending upon what we choose to do to the roof, you know, that was all the way up to fifty three. Um, I have a couple of asks out there from some local contractors to. Um, provide some quotes and estimates and ideas of what to do to the exterior face of the three sides of the building. Um, I'd love to see the brick coated and weather protective. I know Don had mentioned something about. Um, stucco at one time, remember we talked about that?
Yeah, I think you should take the original brick off.
Yeah, I'd like to keep the original brick, but I'd like to paint it. I don't like the color.
Don't you guys are killing me?
Cause it's original. All I jump past with turnover is grave.
My hope was that, you know how we have the rock on the entryway here is like, there's gray, there was like camel color, there's. This orange colors to pick up one of those colors and instead of go from the orange, go to one of those gray colors kind of. Goes with a lot of what we've been doing, a little bit more updated. That way I can get some signage that specifically looks like. I know, that's why I'm. How old is this building?
Fifty seven.
Yeah, late forties.
Nineteen fifty six to fifty seven. Fifty seven picture in this building.
Yeah, yeah.
Older pictures have the old nicer looking building, I think.
It does with the arched windows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're we're almost like castle continues, but the fifties, everything was plain.
Yeah.
So you have. It looks like twenty five.
Yeah.
Thirteen plus nine.
My guess, my guess was I'm gonna probably be all in at somewhere like maybe a hundred, two hundred and ten, I would probably bet for.
Yeah, that's where I mean.
You know.
I'm living deep sticker shop here.
But what I haven't also showed you guys, and I can take it downstairs if you want to, is. You know, there's an original section of this building downstairs and then there's a newer section and um, there's two some pump. Some pumps in the building, one underneath that office and one underneath where I'm sitting basically. And where our water service comes in is constantly leaking. And it goes and drains right to the sun pump. And I showed Mike the other day, I'm like, there's a lot of paneling, old seventyish paneling downstairs, the bathrooms. We just have the bathrooms fixed. Couple weeks ago, we had to have. Jolson's in here to unplug it. Um, there's two restrooms downstairs. I would really like to see some. Something done to the downstairs, so the the original walls don't leak anymore, cause I think what's happening is. Where that water line comes in, it's probably either a separation from the exterior of the building or it's lower on the lower ground.
Well. To me, it starts to become a. Where you wanna go?
I don't know. I mean, like I told Mike, I'm like, there's those people down the cities that advertise their basement specialists and they'll come in and they'll find ways to make sure everything's. Sealed and you're never gonna have any basement problems, but I'll tell you, there's a lot of them downstairs.
I also see someone, I also see Ron's point. I also see someone, I also see Ron's point. This is. History we. For our industry history.
I know.
You know?
I know.
And it's uh. So it's either how far we wanna go, or is it our job to protect this?
Well, it's a matter of the water coming in from the city line when we fix that.
I have moisture coming in. Oh, I had Mike look at the water, a water service. The water line is leaking, he thinks there's probably um water coming in from behind this.
Is the concrete, the basement, the actual foundation is probably from the original building. I doubt they demolished everything and report. It's, it's partial down there.
Yeah.
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 Quick, when we get up to the street.
Yeah.
Probably, there's old foundation and there's new.
But you can't have mold in here. Can't have these people in. Breathing in mold, that's a health risk. So I mean, obviously there, we have to propose some kind of solution that's a healthy solution.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I want this to be here when I'm gone too. I want, you know, there to be something that. The generations that's living in town now are happy to know that this is city hall, you know.
Place to be. Just staying.
So I, I mean, Bill, Crunden and I have been working together the last couple of years. He's, he, his. His material package quality isn't gonna change much, but. My hope is that I can come up with a solid plan with good estimates and maybe find some funding. Um, that's suitable, that the council's okay with, so that maybe this is like a twenty four. That may be a twenty five project. Then we would have hit every single entity facility in the city. At that point.
Yeah, I. Whether or not. It was just a matter of.
How much and where? I know. Constant.
Roll us the numbers and we'll say yes or no.
And do we have anybody looking at that water over there, Mike? To figure out what.
I'm not a good idea. No, I honestly, I just showed Mike like Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be more than happy to show you guys what I'm looking at after we are adjourned, if you wanna walk down there, but.
I've been, I've been watching the water for four years.
Yeah, I've been watching it for almost ten.
It's, it's groundwater, it's seepage, it's a, an old foundation with, you know. Curious spots from water to come from.
Yeah.
Luckily where it's coming through, it's at least close enough to the sump there that it makes its way right into there. And really truly, you know, to, to fix that stuff properly, if it was your house. You're gonna dig down on the outside of your foundation and you're gonna seal your foundation. You're not doing that here.
Yeah.
So it, it's a fix from inside. And I've seen the way that those fixes are, my in-laws actually did it in their basement. It's really, it's, it's a false wall that they put up. And then they funnel the water around to the song, so it's really. It's whatever you want it to be, you just can't see it. It's still coming through, you just can't see it, is all that really happens there.
So the containing amount of moisture that's creating the mold.
The mold is the old wood panel.
Yeah.
We rip that off and we.
I've had a dehumidifier down there that I've been.
Okay.
Running for the last. Three and a half years, um.
Yeah, you can't have wood where it's water.
Um, and that's, yeah, and that, and that's helped and, and it really, it, it's on an auto and it's. On the drain into the sump too, so when I started using that and I've got an air cleaner and hit you a smaller one, I think that's.
She can prevent the mold, we just need to get rid of what's there.
Yeah. It really shows a beacon of light when it's wet. So more, yeah.
Nothing else I just saw.
Like you said, yeah, yeah. That's hard to do.
I was running leak humidifiers, cause it's a lot of concrete in my basement.
Some of the basements don't have. Dirt pours that got poured later on. Yeah, you have a dirt basement pour and then they would pour the concrete. Some spots the concrete's listed, some spots it's not there. Sometime that has no ratings. So I don't know, well.
I'll let you know what I figure out. When I get, when I get it all put together in a nice little bow package, I'll give it to you.
I'm, I'm one of those, I'm a big believer probably top down, like. Dawn has been so kind to play out, you know, part of the water. Starts there.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
You, you know, I mean, if it's getting in between and doing all kinds of other things. What, uh, with that? Anybody have anything else? I really regret saying that sometimes.
I, I have some.
Okay.
I was thinking about. Something there, so. The city took on this project next door with all these buildings. Because they were falling in, so the city actually had to do something with part of them.
In order to get the funding now.
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Not, not, not getting any funding, just, just cause because it was all falling in. They were condemned.
Correct.
Yeah, so have a liability for the city. Right, so. Do we have any policy or anything or anything written up? If, if we know the city have anything that. Or is there any way the city could back themselves or that stop? So it can't happen again, so the city is not liable for that? Like, say.
I think I see where you're.
So, so people just can't abandon buildings and. The city end up. Put, put up the bill for it. This is, you know, not today, but in the future.
I think ultimately, you didn't really have to flip the bill over there. We chose to, the city chose to take them down.
But I think what Donna is saying is, is there, are, is there a path that, that the city in the future could take? That would prevent that need, like.
How do we prevent it from?
A larger restriction on zoning or an ordinance standpoint that. Forces the owner to take ownership of what's going on. With their property. I mean, yeah, we have, you know, we have help, help. You know, an ordinance against health and blight and buildings and. Yard debris and that type of thing when it comes to like private property. Commercial property, I guess, would probably be the same lines. Um, but ultimately, I guess, my mindset is. If I didn't wanna do anything to it and I wasn't gonna pay the taxes on it anyway, I just let it go to crap and then it's somebody else's problem. Then can't.
What happened, I mean.
Which is what happened, so.
One parcel of those three particles or whatever was tax forfeited.
Just one was.
The other two were all.
Right.
And the tax forfeited one was the worst condition.
It was the one that was causing probably the problems for the other two.
Yeah.
At some point, but honestly. Having sandwiched, view, sandwiched buildings on top of one another, including ours and Anderson's. That old grocery store is really the ultimate cause of the whole thing in this situation. What I know Donna is trying to do is, how do we prevent it from happening in the future? I guess in a commercial standpoint, you on a planning and zoning, you would. Change your, let's say you change your setbacks from zero to. Four feet on the side, so people don't, they'll be building right up against the number building, so you don't have that.
Well, I think we already have setbacks.
We do, but in the business, in the business district, the, the setback is zero.
I think, I think what you're talking about is trying to force them to keep their buildings up. And I don't think you can do that, that's, I mean, that's a government.
I'm not saying force anybody keep the building, I'm just saying to prevent the. The liability on the, on the cities.
And the liability wasn't on us, though. We, we went out and took it upon ourselves.
So. What I, so it's, okay, so the taxpayers took the brunt of, okay, so.
But that was after the decision had been made by the council.
Okay.
So it wasn't, it wasn't that the liability landed. So on us solely, it was a decision that was made at that table to do this project.
So moving forward. In the future. Okay, okay, I understand where you're saying, uh, before my time.
Sure.
Okay, so in the future, moving forward in the future, so uh, other commercial buildings that are. That are, say, in, in our city limits. That. It's not, if we can somehow create something or. Look into it anyway, it's about, so the city is that. You know.
I think I know where you're coming from. It's, it's more to the needs of having like um, a building inspector. And having a set of standards that everybody has to um, stay within and being able to enforce that.
Well, yeah, so, okay, just for instance, so the building cross, say, they don't wanna do anything with, just, just.
Yep.
Or.
Yep.
The theater, say, see the theater, so they're done with it, they don't wanna do it anymore. And they quit heating it and they quit doing anything with, all of a sudden, now it's starting to. Turn shabby and the roof's starting to leak and it's starting to fall in. And it's starting to be an eyesore for the city, it's a liability and for the community and. What happens to it then? All of a sudden it goes back to, say, a tax forfeiture and. It's in the city limits, so the city, so is the city liable for taking that over and cleaning it up?
No, no, i- i- in, I mean, if, if I wanna flip it on you instead of a commercial, I can use a residential. Example of a piece of property that is no longer has a home that was in the same kind of disarray. The owners didn't even live in town, but they just let it fall apart. Kids were partying in it, breaking windows, there was animals in it, it was causing harm. And a public nuisance to the neighbors. And what I did was, I demanded the owners. Take action on it, or I was gonna condemn it and uh. Um, then uh. Levy for all the fees that would cost in order to take it down. So in my mind, it's the owner's responsibility first, okay? If the owner will take ownership on it, then they'll take it down, it's less liability, it's less uh attorney's fees. It's less work like we just did for the city and the taxpayers to take it down. Problem is, is that. Ultimately, it's gonna be that particular taxpayers' money at the end. If the city has to get involved, if the house becomes condemned. We have our rental inspector come in and look at it, like we asked for the inspection of the, the bank building across the street. And he says, no, this building has to come down, no one can live in it anymore, you need to not have it, this person has to take it down. You have to put that on the owner first. If the owner refuses and you give them that time limit, we believe them, the city can step in, condemn it. Take it down and then levy all those fees, including the attorney's fees to that taxpayer. Along process.
But that levy is on the real property.
It's on the real property.
Yeah, but if they tax.
Then what happens is at some point, any forfeited property inside the city, if it is sold. At the sheriff's auction, we get that money. Any of the penalties and back taxes come back to us, we do get it. Because this county acts on behalf of the city to collect property taxes. So even if it's a forfeited piece of property, if, and it's been out there for half a dozen years, at some point when that. Piece of property does sell, the city gets the back taxes and penalties.
From the sale price.
From the sale price, that does happen. And then they, that's why twice a year, the county puts it on their website. All over this, all over the county, that's, that's set dollar amount, that's the last amount of market value of the piece of property.
Where was this outside?
Um, right behind the alley um, between Shannon Muller's launcher mat and the house on the corner. And now the school owns that piece of property. Between the house.
Yeah.
And the alley to the uh, visitors parking lot there.
Okay, I, I, okay, you can explain that, so.
So there's, there are processes out there, John, I understand what you're coming to.
No, I see, I, I got what you're saying.
There's a lot of different avenues. And I, and I believe that's why the state of Minnesota has created this brownfield. Projects at a state level to help for those, but predominantly they end up being. At the state level because it's deed and that's economic development. It's on a commercial or a business level that they do that because they're trying to make clean area for people to come back. And revitalize a business or an industrial district. It doesn't typically happen in a residential district. Of a city. I, I mean, I just recently had the same question from somebody that has a trailer park. Uh, has a trailer in the park. They wanted to know if the city would condemn a specific trailer, unlike it's on private property. It's the responsibility of the owner of the trailer park to take action on that. Not the city, and it's a quicker process. If the owner takes the process on than the city. Because now you're involving staff fees, attorney's fees, inspector fees, hiring a contractor and all of that. And taxpayer dollars to do so, and then to kick it back on them. So any kind of a process you can take on that doesn't involve. Um, the property taxes that we levy for is the best way to do it. The same reason why we try not to forgive water when there's an issue with somebody's water meter or water, if they, you know, that's their hose on or something. You, you're still ultimately responsible for it, right? We don't forgive it.
Standable.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Sorry. You know, you had to ask.
I tried to give you the short answer, but. There's, there's so many different fingers and spider webs on that whole conversation.
I didn't know.
Yeah. But, but the important thing, and I guess the takeaway that I can give you is. Compliance of property owners is so important. No one wants their property to diminish value, so you don't wanna live next to blights.
No.
And you also don't want, you know, the house next to you to be. Go into forfeiture and fall apart either, because that affects your market value too.
Right.
Cause if you ever had to sell it, no one's gonna wanna buy it if they're living next to that.
Actually, when you get a loan for a house, you sign a document, says that you will take care of this property. You know, because you're getting a loan for it. So people are committed to doing that, they just. You know, read the whole document. They just don't.
Someone along the way, they just say.
I don't care.
Unfortunately, you know, throughout the years, these buildings got tied together and they couldn't shut it down.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, yeah, that's just, that's just.
And there we go, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody wanna look downstairs?
Sure, I'll take it.